Good morning, this is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It is Friday, March twenty fifth. Happy Friday, everybody. We are having a work session this morning. We will start with the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bog, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Hackett, Commissioner Messner. Commissioner McGowan. Commissioner Robbins. Mr. Chair, you have four out of seven commissioners present.
Okay, great, that is a quorum. Good to see everybody on this Friday. We do not have an agenda today. Today is a work session. We have these sporadically in which commissioners are able to chat amongst themselves and with staff about important topics before the commission. I know a couple of us, I think, have some topics I would like to potentially call upon Deputy Director Scott Cuthbertson first. I think he has a topic of relevance that is relevant to us that we want to hear from.
Thank you, Chair Robbins. Scott Cuthbertson, Deputy Director of Operations for COGCC. I wanted to just update the commission regarding the topic of D ninety Energy Production Reporting that came up both during the variance hearing that the commission heard as well as some follow-up conversations from at least one concerned member of the public, and I think more than one. And I, and we had been working on this and I, I wanted to update the commission to let them know where we're at. And just by way of background, you know, Sandridge Exploration and Production LLC sold a number of assets to D ninety Energy LLC on February fifth of two thousand and twenty-one. Sandridge filed their Form nine intent to transfer those assets and informing the commission on April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. And D ninety filed their Form nine subsequent several days later on May twelfth. There were several requests for additional information in the process of processing those that transfer request, including some additional financial assurance that was received in September of two thousand and twenty-one and some final corrections to the list of transferred assets that was completed on December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. The transfer forms received final approval on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Just by way of side note, that's a really long process time that we have significantly improved. You know, these were some of the first transfers that we processed post-mission change rulemaking becoming effective in January of two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm, I, I do also want to report that we've made significant improvements in our processing time on that and continue to look for ways to improve that. Between the time that D ninety took over the operation in February of two thousand and twenty-one and the transfer approval on January fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, no production reports were submitted because Sandridge did not have staff to submit the reports. And the system would not allow D ninety to submit reports because they were not yet the operator of record. In preparing for the recent D ninety variance hearing, staff identified the missing production reports. And I reached out to D ninety and they contacted our production staff to get help processing the reports manually. We have done that consistently with operators who, because of the transfer process, may not have been able to submit reports using our digital tools. We still enable them to submit those reports directly to our production staff and then our production staff goes in manually and enters the information so that it's not missing. So D ninety did reach out to our production staff on my suggestion. And however, they had, they've had a number of issues submitting reports that could be integrated into our database because of formatting errors or embedded equations, several different things that took, again, several back and forths with the operator even for us to be able to get reports that we could then upload manually. We did finally get reports that had no formatting errors that could be uploaded on March eighth and then a second batch on March fifteenth of this month. Once the production reports were in the system, staff is able to, you know, analyze them and notice that the reports were showing the gas was being used onsite instead of being flared. And that each well produced basically the same amount for the months of May through July, May, June, or July, as if maybe they hadn't collected monthly production in, which would be a further, you know, non-compliance. But it's, in addition, it's really unusual that you would have, you know, three months of the same production for all your wells. And so that and some other things warranted some additional inquiry for those months. And within a week of that review, the director and a member of the commission also received an expression of concern regarding the flaring observation from Dr. Barbara Vasquez. And I do want to acknowledge and express appreciation to Dr. Vasquez for taking the time to communicate her observations. We did make her aware of this presentation this morning and I think she had another engagement that's going to prevent her from listening in. So I will look for ways to reach out to her after this as well. So where we stand right now is that we are sending a written demand for D ninety to either correct the production reports or explain to us how they were able to start using gas, using a hundred percent of their gas onsite. And if they were, why did they need a variance hearing? There's, there's something obviously not, there's something obviously inconsistent. And so we are preparing a written demand for additional information for them to either correct their production reports or submit metering data that support the duplicate of amounts from month to month as, as well as an explanation, like I said, as to how they are beneficially using the gas onsite or correct their form to show that they have been flaring. We'll also be following up the receipt of that information with a current comp compliance evaluation that's in process and and, and that's, we'll, we'll see where we go with that once we get their response to our written demand. I would say that this operator has seemed to have difficulties providing information and so we're going to try to make sure that they, they know how to do that and, and get that done. So that's the, the context of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, Commissioner, like that.
Thank you so much for the report, Mr. Cuthbertson. Do folks have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate you following up on that, Scott, and providing the information to us. That's super helpful. And look forward to hearing what the response is from the operator.
Will do. Thank you very much. All right, um, very good. I had just two short matters to let folks know that I'm still working on things. I have been working on the development of a West Slope Working Group. As we discussed a month or two ago, I've had some reach outs with some of the West Slope operators and I had a discussion with West Slope KOGA. I now need to take all that information and work with internally with our staff to develop up a a program that could be workable. I should have something to share with the group as well as our West Slope operators and stakeholders here shortly. So just wanted to let folks know that that's not falling off the radar screen. It's just not been at the top of my list, but I am working on it. Also, just a quick update. As you know, I was appointed the hearing officer for the KPK matter. I recently had a meeting with KPK's attorneys and staff and staff's attorneys and staff to work through an issue. I am going to be presenting both sides a recommended order as hearing officer. We'll see what the sides do with that and there will be an update to the remaining commissioners here fairly shortly. So that'll get posted for a update to you soon. So I don't know, I don't have anything further because I don't know what the parties are going to think about my recommended order. And we'll just wait and see, you know, what their thoughts are and, and then they'll come before you with their sort of position. So both of those matters are still out there and circulating and be providing further information shortly. That's my updates for the morning.
Mr. Chair, do you, do you have some thoughts about as part of that process that you're going through with KPK, how we may be able to address the concerns that we heard from Thornton earlier this week and how you want to thoughts about how to how to fold that into these conversations that we're already having with KPK, I guess?
Yes, and that reminds me that I, I received a response from KPK that I have not read yet Thursday morning or Wednesday evening with regard to the Thornton matter. And so I believe that matter will probably get wrapped up into the overall update through the commission that, that you will see, I believe, probably mid-Aprilish sort of timeframe.
I'm sorry, could you, could you clarify for me? I think that and maybe I'm confusing two things. I feel like that you got, you got a task with the fun project of seeing if we could work something out on the grip with between staff of KPK and our staff. And then in addition to that, is there, are we still, I don't know if owed is the right word, but owed some sort of quarterly check-in from KPK as part of the compliance? And are we just going to fold those all together?
Yes, yes, and yes. Okay. I'll just pick on somebody. Commissioner Messner, did you have any updates for us today or for the stakeholders?
I do. One is just a, an update and a question. Well, let me start with an update. So just so everyone knows, I did have the opportunity to present in front of the Laramie County League of Women Voters last night, a couple nights ago, can't remember exactly. And I thought that went well. There were six, I think, six different presenters there. And it was just an informational session about, I mean, from our perspective, just our mission change and financial assurance rulemakings and just an update to that community on our, on our rules. They also heard from other local governments, the Loveland Planning Department, some professors from CSU and others, just generally about oil and gas development along the I twenty-five corridor. So I thought it was a good presentation overall and was happy to participate there. I think they were appreciative. Other thing I wanted to chat about is, I don't know if everyone remembers, but we had an informational session on produced water. And one of our, one of our presenters at that produced water informational session was Dr. James Rosenbloom from the Colorado School of Mines. And he had talked about the potential of trying to develop a produced water consortium. And so I've been chatting with him further about that. And he had put together a white paper that I can send to you all. But the abstract of it is that he's interested in, in exploring this idea. He's been chatting with some folks, some operators as well as the Colorado School of Mines and some other academic institutions about, you know, what, what it may take to do a produced water consortium. There is, New Mexico has a produced water consortium, Texas has a produced water consortium. And I thought it may be something that we would be interested in exploring. The abstract states a Colorado Produced Water Consortium would be centered around bringing regulators, industry researchers and non-governmental organizations together to address produced water challenges and ideally provide an informed path for the utilization of this water resource inside and potentially outside of the oil fields in Colorado. The entity would be housed in the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission in collaboration with the Colorado School of Mines. The focus would be to build upon produced water consortium efforts nationally to address critical scientific and regulatory knowledge gaps that help inform regulations and policies that are protective of public health and the environment in Colorado. Additionally, these regulations and policies would also provide a path that encourages the oil and gas industry to reuse their produced water inside and someday outside the oil field. Which again was kind of one of the topics, the primary topic we were discussing during that produced water informational docket. So assuming that it would be okay with you, I thought maybe it would be good to put a group of stakeholders together just to explore the idea putting together a produced water consortium, better understand what, what it would take to actually put that together and get a, an idea of what potential next steps would be in developing a produced water consortium. And then check back in with the commission with the results of that and see if that's something we're interested in moving forward with. Anyone have any thoughts about that?
I wouldn't mind seeing something kind of more formal presented so the commission would know like what role we would play, you know, if there's recommendations, what's the expectation that comes from those recommendations? But I think it's a great idea to get folks together and have everyone talking and rolling in the same direction. So I appreciate the, the work on that.
Yeah, I think that the outcome of the, of kind of the stakeholder working group would be to provide just that, you know, what, what would it take to actually do this? You know, what would the dollar amount be? What would the, the capacity be? Where would it be housed? You know, how much work would it be to put this together and, and what, what would be the ultimate result of it? So.
Yeah, John, I think that'd be a great idea. I, I think that there's a, you know, every time we, we come across these, these topics that, that either present challenges or create questions for us in, in what we're doing, I think it's important to get, get the right folks together to, to make sure that we close those gaps and get that knowledge before us. So I appreciate you taking lead on it.
Agreed.
Great. Well, I'll, I'll move forward with at least starting to develop a, a list of stakeholders that may be interested in participating in a conversation. If, if any of you have suggestions of, of folks that may be interested, just shoot me an email and I'll make sure to reach out to them. And then my last thing is now that we've finished up with the financial assurance rulemaking, which, you know, was, was a big process we just went through. And now that we're starting to review a number of different OGDPs, I thought it may be a good idea to do another round of check-ins with local governments around the state. At least put it out there that we're available to present on that financial assurance rulemaking and update them on how the OGDP process is and then hear from them as far as how the, the review process is going in their communities. But wanted to check in with you all before I kind of put that out there to make sure you thought that was a good idea.
I think that's a good idea, John. I also note that Megan and I think that, that, that she's rolled forward with sort of the local liaison process. And so it might be helpful for you, you and I to touch base with her and sort of coordinate so that we're all, you know, moving in the same direction on that. But I think it's a, it's a good idea. I'd be interested in, in talking with folks and and sort of learning, you know, what they may be thinking in terms of financial assurances and how those might overlap, et cetera. So thanks for bringing that back up and I would encourage you to touch base with Megan on that.
That sounds good. That's all I have today.
Bill, anything to get on the calls?
Yeah, thanks, John. I appreciate that. And I am going to, so, so there was a an informational docket idea that was brought to my attention late last year and it really fell off my rate, never followed my radar, but I had to take it off the the burners during financial assurance. I'm looking to, to reignite it here in the next couple of months. And it's basically kind of, you know, updates and innovation in oil and gas. There's a couple of topics that have come across our desk recently that I think would be important to, to bring into this conversation and I would look to, to you guys to help me populate this list any further with any ideas you guys might have. You know, one of the ones that comes to top of the mind is, is, is this data, you know, mining, this data storage, I guess, needs and then how it pertains to its use in the oil patch with regard to onsite natural gas usage with the idea behind flaring reduction. Now we've gotten rid of routine flaring pretty well. But I think that this is an opportunity for us to learn about where flaring was more challenging because of lack of infrastructure from pipeline takeaway and this technology is being employed. We can learn a little bit more about it. So that's, that's one of the topics is kind of this onsite natural gas usage and flaring mitigation technology. So really thinking about data mining. One component of that, someone brought to my attention, a technology called Eco Vapor, which I think, I think that's a, like a proprietary actual company product. So, you know, I'm going to talk to those folks and see how that technology works and how it's employed and, and who's using it. You know, I, I think one thing we want to avoid is, is really getting sales pitches to us, but we would do want to understand the technology itself. So that's kind of one category is kind of onsite natural gas usage. There are two things that had come to my attention on that. Another is oil and gas byproduct use. And so this was, this first one may dovetail with what you're working on, John, which is using oil and gas byproducts and really oil and gas energy and geology. And that's really the extent of what I know about it. To, to generate geothermal, where geothermal energy where there is oil and gas operational, I guess, conditions that exist there. And one of the ways they're using it is through the, the heat and the steam and, and part of the, I guess, production characteristics of, of produced water. And so that's something, John, that you and I can talk about a little bit. The company that was brought to my attention was Transitional Energy. There's a gentleman on there who used to be on this commission, John Benton. And so I think he reached out to Julie and Julie passed that along to me to, to bird dog that and to get it onto something that maybe we could learn about a little bit. The other part of that oil and gas byproduct use kind of category would include carbons capture, carbon sequestration. So there's a couple of companies out there who I've been put in touch with, who may be able to, to give us a little more insight on, on how it works, what, what the future looks like in that regard and how it may impact us either as regulators or how it may, you know, find its way into, you know, the Colorado oil and gas fields. So those are a couple of, a couple of categories that I fleshed out a little bit. Some categories that I haven't fleshed out as much that I would like to learn a little bit more about are pipeline technology, right? It's a little bit outside of what we do, but I think it's important that we understand how, how pipelines work, what advancements have been put in in terms of automation, in terms of monitoring, in terms of the safety associated with that. So that's, that's something I'd like to learn a little bit about. And then really drilling advancements on the technology side. We've had some questions about stepouts, about, you know, torque and depth and reach of the laterals with horizontal drilling. I might like to hear from a couple of different operators as to what the challenges are with that, what the advancements and what the future looks like in that regard. And then really planning advancements, right? This is something that's not technologically based as much. But I think a lot, I, I'm hoping that operators have taken a lot of steps in implementing our alternative location analysis in their internal planning processes. Whether that's, you know, using drones or using visualization technology, really understanding what that planning looks like from a desktop perspective and see if we can learn a little bit about that as well. So those are just some general categories that I've thought about, but I'd love to hear from you guys if there's anything that I should add to this list and try and try and flesh out along with this, you know, innovation, technology docket. Knowing that the list I have is, is pretty big so far and there's probably going to be things that get cut. But if we get more things added, we could high grade from there. So that's kind of where I'm at with that. Just kind of getting started on it, really in the brainstorming session. Love some help.
Karen?
I really, I'm really glad that you're looking at some of those things because I, I feel like sometimes, you, you know, you know enough to be dangerous or you don't know what you don't know. And so I'm really appreciative that you're kind of peeking into some of these ideas. And I might be the only one, and if I am, I will explore this more on my own. I feel like I would like to learn a little bit more about the types of technologies that are available for drilling versus completions in particular related to engines use and using electricity versus diesel versus natural gas and what's available and why or why not? And maybe potentially also some discussion around the different emissions from those different, those different technologies and using them. I think that ties in, Bill, to some of the conversation about the drilling advancements and torque. And if I understood some of the conversations, some of these engines and their use, they're more powerful than others and maybe you can't drill as far using one type of power versus another. And I, for me, I would, I would love a discussion around that and some sort of presentation around that. Another issue that I would like to learn more about is where industry sees piping of produced water going in the future. So I think we've heard a lot from folks related. So I think there's some maybe not talking exactly to each other. We're, we're talking about what does tankless mean? But I do see some conversation with some of our stakeholders about wanting to go tankless with produced water after completions when we're, when it's in actual operations. And I'm just wondering what the future looks like for, instead of, you know, trucks coming to pick up produced water and all that truck traffic, what, what does it look like in the future for actual pipeline for produced water going somewhere? I think that would be a really great part of a presentation or a conversation as well.
Yeah. Thanks, Karen. That might be something else I added to my list that maybe John and I could coordinate on, see which, which work group or, or docket it falls on.
It all sounds good to me, Bill. Thanks for taking the lead there.
Okay. John, anything you want to hear about?
Yeah, all of that.
Fair enough. All right. Well, I'll keep everyone posted. This is in the infancy right now. So I'm just trying to dust it off and, and re, reignite it. I'm looking at, I'm, I'm thinking May-June timeframe.
Great. All right. Anything else this morning? All right. Well, to the folks that have participated with us, there's eighteen or so. Thanks for being with us. You've seen the commission have discussion amongst ourselves about these various topics. We look forward to reporting back. And with that, I think our non-agenda is now done. And I think we can just say goodbye. Have a great weekend. You don't need to adjourn. We're just no longer meeting.
Can I add one more thing?
Please, please do.
Do we want to invite Well County to one of these planning meetings? I think that Jason kind of opened that door and said, you know, want to learn more about the WOGA process? And how, you know, what we're looking at and our, and how we're ticking things off. Maybe that would be a good subject or an opportunity for just a discussion versus some formal commission hearing as part of one of our planning meetings.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And I'm happy to take lead. I'll give a, give a call to Jason and Bruce Barker, their attorney and get something set up where we can have, you know, now that we've gone through that first WOGA MOU, OGDP, let me see how many acronyms I can put into assignments. And then have everybody, you know, have a discussion about that outside of a specific application, I think would be helpful. So I can definitely run lead on that. In that regard, I did get a message from Megan that the financial assurances to local governments is going to be at the operator meeting on May tenth. So we might want to put that on our agenda so that we can all make sure we listen into that as well. So.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that real quick, Chair. Yeah. So I like that idea, Karen. I learned a lot from, from Jason during these last this last hearing. I would open the opportunity to learn more. You know, we've also heard a little bit about the process from Garfield County, kind of in an ancillary way through public comment from Mr. Nguyen. In that regard, we've also heard from Greg Dean from Adams County as well. You know, I would open the opportunity for, for some of these local governments that have more oil and gas activity who do regulate, you know, at the, at the local government level to really give us some, some more information and some more of a walkthrough on, on what they're looking at, right? How does it compare to what we're looking at? You know, how, how do these processes overlap and really give us a better sense of, of where those mesh points are?
Agreed.
I think I want to add a word to that too, because I think we've heard from their local government liaison quite a few times as well.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, and like Adams County, John, I, I think maybe you and I can offline sort of coordinate how we want to sort of, you know, do that additional outreach. All right. Anything further? All right. Seeing none, everybody. All right. Seeing none. Everybody have a great weekend.